Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started a little differently today because we have a Navy color guard in our presence today. So we'll start with an invocation and then if you'll remain standing for the presentation of the colors and then the National Anthem. Would everybody please stand at this point? I'll ask Councilman McAtee if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance when we get to that point of the presentation. John?
Thank you, Father, for this day. We are grateful to be in your presence. Your word says in Romans 13 that you place rulers and authorities in place, Father, and we're thankful for these people who give their lives to this great city. We know that your hand is upon the city. We see that on a daily basis, Father, and today we commit this meeting to you. Your word says that if we ask for wisdom, that you will freely give it to us, Father. So we pray for wisdom and the decisions that are going to be made in this meeting today, Father, we pray that you would direct and guide and give us wisdom as we do that. We love you and we thank you for that. It's in your name we pray.
Amen. John Chastain is with Victory Church and now the presentation of the colors.
Ready, hold. Right face. Carry colors. Present arms.
And now the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go, Doc. Attention. Right face. Forward march.
And you can be seated. And as you have noticed, we have called out the Navy today in anticipation of the upcoming Navy Days that are coming to Oklahoma City. We have a proclamation. We have some naval officers here today. I want you everybody come forward. Come on up. We'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas Greater Oklahoma City is honored to have the presence of the United States Navy in our community. And whereas more than 1,000 active-duty sailors and 150 officers are stationed at Tinker Air Force Base to support the TACMO mission with Navy's E-6B aircraft. And where 400 active-duty and reserve sailors are assigned to 15 different reserve units at Navy Operational Support Center, Oklahoma City. Whereas more than 45 active-duty Navy recruiters are stationed throughout Oklahoma City enlisting the best and brightest our city has to offer. And whereas the United States Navy has an annual economic impact of over $100 million in the Greater Oklahoma City area. And whereas the citizens of this great city have a long history of supporting the crew of their namesake submarine, the USS Oklahoma City and the USS Oklahoma Memorial at Pearl Harbor. And whereas sailors will be honored at the Oklahoma City Navy Ball, the nation's largest Navy ball, on October 18th at the National Cowboy and Western Heritage Museum, sponsored by the Oklahoma City Navy League, the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber, and the Navy Strategic Communications Wing One, Tinker Air Force Base. And whereas sailors and their families will be guests of the Oklahoma City Jazz Festival September 26th through 28th as an event of the 9th Annual OKC Navy Days. Whereas the United States Navy 5K Birthday Run will take place at 8:00 AM Saturday, October 4th, at Joby Barnes Park as part of OKC Navy Days. And whereas Gialdia Country Club and OKC Navy Days will host a golf tournament on October 6th for local sailors and officers. And whereas the citizens of Oklahoma City wish to thank the men and women who serve in the United States Navy during the 9th Annual OKC Navy Days. And therefore Mick Cornett, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim United States Navy Days in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation to our US Navy officers that are here today. And Ed, in these uncertain times, our attentions and our prayers are with you guys and thank you for allowing us this opportunity to just draw attention to the positive impressions the Navy has in Oklahoma City.
It's our pleasure to be here, sir. And I do want to say that I'm here representing the Commodore. Captain Heather Coles was unable to be here today, but I'm here with the wing. And as they discussed, there are a lot of sailors here in the Oklahoma City area. We consider this a Navy town. We have a great relationship with Oklahoma City. It's an air force base, but we call it Naval Air Station Tinker. We've had a great relationship with Oklahoma City. We look forward to continuing that. And my friends and I are here representing the Navy, but please remember that there are thousands of sailors, airmen, marines, and soldiers deployed and, as you saw on the news, involved in the war. So keep them in your hearts and your prayers and thank you for having us here today, sir.
You bet. One more round of applause, please.
Your Honor, I would like to point out retired Captain Robin Seba. She's the president of the Navy League. In addition to these great officers and sailors, she provides an important link between the city and the US Navy, and we really appreciate all of her efforts, as well as a link between us and the USS Oklahoma City submarine. Thank you.
We are also in the midst of the Oklahoma City Jazz Festival Week, and we have some people here today. I've lost them. Oh, right up here up front. I was looking beyond here. Come on up. Once again, we have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read and we'll get settled.
Whereas the inaugural OKC Jazz Festival will celebrate America's original music art form and recognize Oklahoma City's jazz heritage and contribution to jazz music. Whereas the OKC Jazz Festival will take place September 22nd through 28th in the Brooktown Entertainment District, including Oklahoma City's historic jazz district, Deep Deuce. Whereas in the 1940s, Oklahoma City's Deep Deuce was one of the largest African-American neighborhoods and was the center for jazz music and African-American culture in our community and was home for legendary jazz musicians such as Charlie Christian and Jimmy Rushing. Whereas the Oklahoma City Jazz Festival will honor posthumously Zelia Page Broh, a musician and educator and the first member inducted into the Oklahoma Jazz Hall of Fame as an Oklahoma City Jazz Ambassador. Whereas the three-day Jazz Festival will feature some of the Oklahoma's greatest jazz musicians, as well as some of our state's rising stars. Whereas the OKC Philharmonic Jazz Orchestra and the Ambassador Choir will perform a special program for the OKC Jazz Festival entitled "Where Gospel Meets Jazz" on Friday evening, September 26th, in a rare joint performance of these two organizations. Whereas the Oklahoma City Jazz Festival, the UCO Jazz Lab, and the UCO Academy of Contemporary Music will host a music workshop for 150 high school music students from the Oklahoma City Public Schools. And whereas the OKC Jazz Festival will benefit music education in our schools. And whereas the OKC Jazz Festival will host local sailors, officers, and their families in support of the 9th Annual OKC Navy Days. Now, therefore Mick Cornett, the Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim September 22nd through 28th as Jazz Festival Week in Oklahoma City.
And let's show our appreciation to those who are bringing the arts to Oklahoma City. You want that? Mike?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And Councilman Pettis, he's one of our Jazz ambassadors. Thanks for your support. I think I may end up giving a solo.
I think we can fit you in, Councilman. We look forward to hearing you play. But we've had great support for the first annual OKC Jazz Fest. Oklahoma City has a rich heritage with jazz music. We want to keep the heritage going. With me today are Charles and Barbara Burton, who've been longtime musicians and former educators in Oklahoma City. And this Jazz Festival is important to them and they've been a lot of help with it. Also Brian Guarrel, who's over Jazz Studies at the University of Central Oklahoma and the Jazz Lab. And we soon will have a Jazz Lab down on the river, so we'll have a little closer Jazz Lab. But we encourage everyone to come out. We're really excited about the Philharmonic and the Ambassador Choir performing Friday night at 9:00. And there's more information there at OKCJazzFest.com. And again, we appreciate the support of the city.
Thank you, Mark Charles. Congratulations. Thank you. Let's show our appreciation. We're also about to turn into the month of October, and that'll mean it's Disability Awareness Month. And Disability Awareness Day is coming up on October 28th. We have several members of the Mayor's Committee on Disability Awareness. If they would all come forward, we'll stand up here as the clerk reads the proclamation.
Whereas the month of October 2014 is designated in the United States as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And whereas 2014 is the 24th anniversary of passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, and whereas leaders and citizens of the City of Oklahoma City are implementing the MAPS III projects, building new sidewalks and other facilities that will be disability-accessible. And whereas Oklahoma City's ADA coordinator and staff work daily to assure that the city's programs and facilities are accessible to all and to implement the city's ADA transition plan. Whereas the Mayor and City Council of the City of Oklahoma City are implementing a broad ordinance requiring ADA-accessible sidewalks on new and renovated major and minor arterial streets. And whereas the City of Oklahoma City needs the knowledge, skill, talent, and productivity of all of our citizens with disabilities to help build our city and energize our economy. Whereas Oklahoma City's people with disabilities deserve the opportunity to work and have full lives. Whereas on October 28th, the Oklahoma City Mayor's Committee on Disability Concern is providing a special seminar on ADA accessibility. And whereas the Oklahoma City Mayor's Committee on Disability Concern's theme for this year is "Rumble Says Tumble Free, Stumble Free, OKC 2014." And on October 28th, the committee will hold its 24th Annual Awards Luncheon to honor outstanding people with disabilities and persons and entities that support their well-being and Area Student Poster Art, raising awareness on progress for people with disabilities. Now, therefore Mick Cornett, the Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2014 as Disability Awareness Month and Tuesday, October 28th, to be Special Disability Awareness Day in the City of Oklahoma City. And he urges observance by all people in the city as a reminder that people with disabilities can learn, work, pay taxes, buy goods and services, be self-supporting, and lead if given the opportunity.
Let's show our appreciation and acknowledgement of Disability Awareness Month. The past chair of the Mayor's Committee for Disability Concerns is here, Pam Henry.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers and all the people of Oklahoma City who are doing so much to help people with disabilities work and learn and have an active life. We appreciate all the MAPS III projects, Project 180. Every time I go to one of those meetings, when I walk in the door, they start saying "ADA, ADA," and I smile ear to ear. Thank you all. Thank you, sir.
Pam said her new middle name is Sidewalks, so we're Pam Sidewalks Henry. Thank you all for what you're doing out there and making Oklahoma City a better place to live. Let's show our appreciation one more time. I also was handed a note by our Public Information Officer Office today that has to do with Disability Awareness Month, which is coming up. And we are now offering, for people with disabilities and blindness and vision impairments, they can subscribe and get disaster information by text or email alert. So if there is some sort of emergency and they don't feel like they can get the proper information from the typical media, they're able to go on this website, which is OKC.Deflink.com, and get a free subscriber-based service that will allow them to get information on what they should do. So if you go to our website, OKC.gov, I'm sure you can find the link on that, but I wanted to pass along that information. We're on item three of the council agenda. We have a couple of appointments. I'll look for a motion. Comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the journal for September 9th. And item 4B is to approve the journal for August 26th. Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
There are a few this morning. On page 18, 18, under item 9A1, PUD 1224, the applicant is requesting that this item be deferred until the October 7th meeting. Again, that's on page 18, 9A1, PUD 1224.
On October 17th?
7th. October 7th. Then moving on to page 22, under item 9K1, item F, 1105 Northwest 27th. Whereas should that be stricken? The owner's removed. And then on to item 9L1, item G, 1204 North St. Clair Avenue. Whereas should that be stricken? It's now occupied. Item H, 6313 South Chartel Avenue. Whereas should that be stricken? It's now occupied. Item I, 1221 Northwest First Street. Whereas should that be stricken? It's now secured. Item Q, 2244 Northeast 22nd. Whereas should that be stricken? It's now secured. Item, on to page 23, item S, 19 Southeast 31st Street. Whereas should that be stricken? The owner, it's now secured. And finally, item W, 2305 Northwest 34th Street. Whereas should that be stricken? It too is secured.
Item six on the council agenda is for revocable permits, and we have several requests for the hold outside events in the city. Item 6A1 is for the AIDS Walk of Oklahoma City. This is in Ward 6. Is there anyone here representing this event today? Yeah, come on up. We'd like to hear more about it. Good morning. We will need your name and address.
Good morning, Mick Cornett. I'm Vernon Meadows and I live at 4125 Southeast 26th Street, actually in Dell City, not actually Oklahoma City. But I am the president of the AIDS Walk Board. I inherited that position about a month ago, right before the walk. And we are scheduling our 16th Walk and our 6th Annual Red Run 5K, and that will be held this coming Sunday. And we're expecting over 100 runners for the 5K. And last year, we had over 2,000 people actually attend the Walk at the Marriott Gardens. We'll have vendors from the different ASOs or AIDS service organizations providing information about their services to the community. Our goal is to raise money, to help fund those, give those agencies grants, to help prevent the spread of HIV in education and actually services. One of our biggest recipients is Other Options, and they have a food pantry that helps people supplement their food with services from them, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for what you do.
Do we have a motion?
Really appreciate it. I make a motion to approve.
All right. Cast your votes on item 6A1. It passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6A2 is the Integris Jim Thorpe Rehabilitation's request to hold the Jim Thorpe Courage Run. Are there people there here representing this group? Come on forward. This is going to take place in Ward 6 and Ward 7, if approved, on October 5th. What can you tell us about it?
Yes, my name is Greg Hornibor. I live at 11763 Blackjack Circle in Guthrie. And this is Susan Van Winkle.
1225 Southwest 133rd Place in Oklahoma City.
And we're program managers for Integris Jim Thorpe Rehab and the race coordinators for the Jim Thorpe Courage Run. This is our 10th run, but our first one in conjunction with Oklahoma City Boat House Foundation on the Gota Weekend, October 5th. We've anticipated 500 to 1,000 participants, racers. We have a fun run, a 5K and a 10K. We also have a 5K and a 10K wheelchair and hand cycle divisions as well. We usually have about 30 wheelchair racers that are out at our event. And we also have over $20,000 in giveaways back to our wheelchair participants, including ultralight wheelchairs.
And we're the largest wheelchair run in the state, wheel in the state.
Well, good luck. And that is coming up on October 5th through Ward 6 and 7. How about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you all and good luck. Item 6A3 is a request from the Red Coyote Running and Fitness Organization to hold Run Toberfest on October 5th over on Claussen Boulevard and up to the Chesapeake Energy Campus. It's in Ward 2. And Burke, come on up.
Hi, I'm Burke Beck. I live at 6709 Reed Drive, Oklahoma City. I'm one of the co-owners of Red Coyote Running and Fitness, and this is our second year holding Run Toberfest 5K. Last year, we had just over 1,500 participants and we're hoping, crossing our fingers, for a few more this year. It benefits girls on the run of Oklahoma County, which is an organization we really believe in. It helps build self-esteem for young girls ages seven through 13. So we've been able to grow that, help grow that organization, Oklahoma City. They have over 13 chapters now. And last year, we provided 200 scholarships, so we're excited.
All right. Burke, thank you.
Thank you.
How about a motion on this item? Ed, it's in Ward 2. Okay. Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 6A4 is a request from Rebuilding Together Oklahoma City to hold the Rebuilding Together Construction Derby. And they'll hold that on Northwest Fifth Street in Ward 6. And you all must be the interested parties.
Good morning. My name is Rick Johnson. I live in Edmund at 2632 Ash Hollow Lane. And this is Maggie Nichols with Rebuilding Together. I'm actually a board member of Rebuilding Together OKC. The organization provides free home repairs for low-income senior homeowners to help keep them warm, safe, and dry in their own homes. The Construction Derby, this is our 11th Annual Construction Derby. It's a fundraising event, obviously, for the local chapter. It is a soapbox derby for grownups. These are non-wheeled vehicles that actually has a push start, so there's a crew involved, four people, some in costume. The cars are custom-built by anything from a ladder with wheels on it to some very high-tech looking vehicles. It's a lot of fun. Well, this year, for the first time, we'll have food trucks. We have a children's area. We have a car show as well. And it is open to the public. There is no fee. The free food is provided. It is Sunday, October 5th. I believe the time trials start at 1:00. Maggie? Yeah, and it's open to the public at 11:00. It's a lot of fun. We had a great crowd last year. Hope to build on that, even bigger crowd. There are 32, or at least 32, I think we might have to be 35 cars now. I think that's our record for us, so. It's a great event, fun for the kids, fun for the adults. Hope to see some of you there.
I have heard good things about it. So a good cause and a really fun event. But again, as you mentioned, the time trials start at 11:45 on Sunday, October 5th. And then the races start at 2:00 in the afternoon if people want to come by and watch this year. And then next year, we'll expect them to have an entry.
Yeah.
How about a motion on this event?
This is a really, really fun event, Mayor. And I said I'm going to use the word "supposed adults" because I've been there and I'm not quite so sure. And please don't give up the cheeseburgers. I love the food trucks, but those are some of the best cheeseburgers I've ever had. I'd make a motion to approve.
Cast your vote. It passed unanimously. Thank you all. And item 6A5 is a request from VA Marketing and Branding to hold Carne Diem. And Larry McAllister's here.
Larry McAllister, 3125 Northwest 52nd, Oklahoma City. Our event is a street party disguised as a chili cook-off. We'll have around 15 restaurants and about 40 amateur chili makers. And it's, we'll have a band and lots of people, and it's all a United Way fundraiser. And this is our third time that we've been in the street. It's our 12th Carne Diem.
Moving on to some of the best chili I've ever had. It's really, it's also a wonderful day. Move approval of the event.
All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
We're on to item 6A6. It's the Susan G. Komen Breast Cancer Foundation's request to hold their Race for the Cure. Race will be October the 18th. Looks like someone is here representing the Komen Breast Cancer Foundation. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Alisa Pope, and I live at 11913 Whitney Way, Oklahoma City. This is our 21st Annual Susan G. Komen Race for the Cure, benefiting central and western Oklahoma. Last year, the race, we were able to grant out over $400,000 back to our local nonprofits for their breast health education programs, as well as mammograms and diagnostic services. We expect about 10,000 to 11,000 participants at the race this year. And we'll have our grantees that will be out there to talk about their different programs that they do in regards to the grants that we provide to them as well.
All right. How about a motion then on this item in Ward 6 and 7? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Item 6A7 is a request from the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, the Oklahoma Chapter, to hold the Walk to Cure Diabetes throughout Ward 7 on October 4th. Good morning.
Good morning. McKinsey Graham, 121 Northwest Robinson, Oklahoma City. We're holding our Walk to Cure on October 4th. We're hoping to raise $175,000 for type 1 diabetes this year. The walk will start at 9:00 and then we'll have some fun activities, face painting, big inflatables and stuff for the kids after. We have rebranded. We're JDRF now. Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation is kind of out the door, just as an FYI. If you're diagnosed as a child, you grow up and you still have diabetes. So type 1 diabetes will not go away until we find a cure, so that's why we do these events every year.
All right. Well, thank you, McKinsey. And we have a motion and a second, so let's vote on item 8A7. And it passed unanimously. Thank you. I will assess the council meeting convenance Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
I do have a question on C, D, and E. This is on the consent article, but I'll go ahead and ask. These are post-employment benefit contracts, the largest of which is item D with United Healthcare. That's $38 million. That's being increased by 7% this year. The Blue Cross Blue Shield Medical Stop Loss Coverage is being increased 27%. And then item C is being decreased 5%. So I guess I'd look for some historical context. I mean, these seem to be large increases. The 38 million especially, where are we historically? Is this part for the corner? Is this par for the course or is it?
Obviously, the stopgap. We have not seen 27% increases on that on an annual basis. There were some extraordinary events that we've had. Colton here can answer this better than I can, but the other increases are actually fairly moderate compared to what's going on in the marketplace at this point.
Yes, sir. And historically, this includes how much money we're going to, the employee and the employer are going to contribute to it. And the HMO plan is our largest health insurance plan that we have, so that's why it's a very large number. And we cover, in historic, we're around 10,000 lives on our combined health insurance plans. And so, what you're seeing here is the cost to do as a business. We spend about $2.5 million on just HMO every month.
Why the large percentage increase?
Why the large percentages? The market's moving. The market has moved up after a few years of being relatively calm. We've gone up. 7% is pretty good on the HMO side of the house. The Dymity Plan, the stop-loss market has hardened, as they say in the insurance business, and it has gone up. We've had a stop-loss ratio loss of over 101% in the past five years. So, that means that we've had more claims against that policy than what we received, than what we paid in premiums. So, that's driving that cost. And Blue Cross Blue Shield has altered their underwriting model a little bit in the market. So, we were also affected by their business policies on that. So, that's driving our stop-loss increase. The admin fee was going up 4% anyway. We already pre-negotiated that when we entered business with Blue Cross Blue Shield three years ago for this cycle. The HMO side, they started out at 12%. We've moved them down to 7%, and that's pretty good for the market, because I understand most people are getting high rate increases this year, just market-wide. And it's based on our ratios of loss that goes on in our actual health insurance plans, our population. We know we've got more activity going on, utilization. And prescription drugs is also a painful cost center for us right now, because prescription drugs, just in general, have gone up 9%. Just in ingredient costs. So, we're being hit with those changes in the marketplace. So, the market has moved higher, and it's pretty much how we fall into place. And I don't think it's out of line. And we negotiated those things down from what their original proposals are. I think we're in a good point for this year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. All right. Ready to vote the MFA? Do we have a motion? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convenes Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Comment your questions on the PPA?
Thank you. I'm second to the challenge. PPA A is a project that deals with the Lincoln Golf Course. And amendment, amendment number one and number two, modify the contract documents played period of the course. Are the bidders, will they agree to hold their bids?
Councilman, I'm not familiar with the addendum on it. Eric, it has to do with the FFNE at the Lincoln Park Golf Course. There's two addendum on the item, apparently having to do with Holden changing some delivery dates.
I had to reorganize my agenda this morning with our format change, so just a moment, please. We're trying to get there.
While you're doing that, I thought it was a great format change, really good idea. If the revocables followed, I don't know why we didn't think of that a lot sooner. It's a great idea.
I'm just going to have to look to see what the specifics were on the addenda. I don't have notes that say. I mean, obviously, when we do bidding, there's some clarifications that are issued, but I can get back to you on what was specific to these two addenda for this particular project if need be.
And also, will the bids be held during this period of time, so that bidders won't be inconvenienced by changing prices?
No. I would tell you that any time that we have to extend the contract, because we've got extra time needed for review, we work out with the potential bidders whether or not they're agreeing to extend their prices. And so, in cases, you're going to see that on more than one agenda item today, all of the bidders are in agreement.
This is actually a contract award, Councilman. So, the contract has been awarded to the little bidder. What happens is that sometimes paperwork, we're not able to get the contract awarded within the 35, how many days we have, 30?
30 days with a 45-day max for extension.
On it. And so, we sometimes have to exceed that. And if the vendor agrees to it, which they almost always do, then we go ahead and extend that time and get it put in place. Actually, one of the legislation, legislative issues we're considering this year is actually a change of state law that would lengthen that time period to award the contract. And so, because with the number of approvals we go through processes, this had to go through the Golf Commission. Sometimes the MAFS projects have to go through several subcommittees. And we sometimes, the MAFS for Kids, we go into the School Board. Sometimes we have problems getting those contracts awarded within that period, and that has been a problem for us from time to time.
Will the state legislature, the new legislation we're talking about, will that require the bidders to hold their bidding place?
Yeah, yes. But again, it's just something proposed. We haven't decided whether we're going to put that on our legislative agenda or not this year.
You have a question I had about Lincoln Park Golf Course. Furnishing a banquet area for parties, will they require additional people?
Well, they put together full performa and took a look at it. There will be part-time people involved to, they'll have to ramp up and ramp down for special events, although it's anticipated that a number of those events will, I think, be catered in. So, the answer to that is, there could be some part-time people that will be added from time to time, based upon the workload.
Will the Lincoln Golf Course people employ a banquet salesman, drum business, or are they just going to wait and walk in the door?
Morning, Mayor. City Council Doug Cupper, Director of Parks and Recreation. It's our intent to, we're still looking at operational items. We're even discussing with the Civic Center their ability to staff that for special events, weddings, and things along those lines. Obviously, golf tournaments and the catering of those activities will be done by the clubhouse and the clubhouse personnel. But we're still evaluating the extracurricular activities, if you will, the possible bridal affairs, birthday parties, corporate things not associated with a golf tournament, things along those lines. We're still looking at it. But as Mr. Couch pointed out, we will probably have to add a few part-timers, but we're not anticipating full-time at this time.
Thank you.
Now, with the clubhouse, the clubhouse is supposed to open, I know I asked a question at the last meeting, but the clubhouse is supposed to be open in December. That's the new date, correct?
That is correct. We're trying to make sure that we're up and running for all of the inquiries for Christmas parties and that sort of thing that have already asked us to participate there.
All right. Thank you. All right. Ready to vote the PPA?
Your Honor, I have one more question on the PPA project, and that is one that deals with the baseball field. Will the new owners, are they acquiescing contracts placed?
Are the new owners acquiescing to the contract that's been placed, far as certain?
Well, yeah, no, they're assuming the contract as is.
Thank you.
All right. We're voting the PPA. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convenes Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, just the claims and payroll today.
Who's the item?
We have a motion and a second on the EAT. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC EAT, reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right. Are there any individual considerations?
Q.
Is that Q?
Q.
Okay.
And Mayor, if I could, I'm going to follow that list. R, S, and T.
Okay. David?
B, H.
All right. What else? All right. Ed, you want to get started with item Q?
Well, this is the second meeting in a row. Our Animal Welfare Division has received an unsolicited significant donation, and I just wanted to acknowledge this $150,000 grant from the Stanton Foundation and I guess ask what that's about or who.
Bob, can you answer that?
This foundation is associated with the ASPCA nationally. They approached us about, asking us if we felt like we could use an adoption vehicle. And we said, yes, we could.
So, we didn't apply for it?
We didn't have to apply. They offered it. And in the memo, there's a few things that we have to meet, but the conditions are pretty easy to do. We do 11, 12 adoption events a month, and this will allow us to take that vehicle, those adoptions. And it has a viewing window, and then you can walk through it. It's really going to help us.
Great.
Meg, R, S, and T?
Great, thank you, Mayor. These three items all relate to the increasing and exciting arts scene in Oklahoma City. And I see a friend from Oklahoma City Contemporary here. Item 7R is an agreement with Oklahoma Contemporary Arts Center to install a work in Campbell Park. The artist's name is Orly Ganger, and I think the public opening is the 20th of October. And I think it's a little bit, the description doesn't really do this justice. This is a piece of work. It's called Terra, and it consists of layers of hand-knotted lobster rope that are stacked up in a very interesting way. The coloration is sort of a red-orange hue that's supposed to represent Oklahoma dirt. And it's, I think, going to be a very exciting activation for the first time of Cannibal Park and helping citizens know what's coming with Oklahoma Contemporary Arts Center. So, we're very excited to have that happening, and it will be installed for a full year. And so, we hope folks will really have an opportunity to enjoy it. Item 7S is a call to artists to pre-qualify for a pool of artists for 2004 and 15. And Robbie Kinzel is here, who's our cultural attache, I like to call her. But these are, we have a lot of public art projects that will be open for interested artists that are in an amount under $25,000. And so, Robbie's office has planned to put out a call to artists so that we have a list in place of folks that could be selected for these public projects. We're also going to make that list available to other private entities and other folks so that they would have a group of vetted artists ready to go for some of these smaller public projects that we have. And that call will be, Robbie, when is it going out? The receipt date is November 13th at 4:00 p.m. And then item...
Excuse me, before you go on, how was the amount permit, 5,000? Seems like that's a pretty low price for a party.
We have a few pieces that come in that are less than 25, based upon our 1% limit. So, that's, it's for smaller art pieces.
The budget's set at that 1% of construction price of the public project. And so, the three that we currently have pat are Kitchen Lake, Fire Station 21, and Memorial Park will all be under that $25,000 threshold. And then item 7T is a similar piece, that this is a call to artists and a request for qualifications to provide the public art for the exterior of the new police headquarters at 700 Call Cord Drive. And that proposal receipt date is also November 4th. The budget here is much more substantial, and we're looking for one or more works of public art with a budget not to exceed $207,500. So, for any artists that are listening, please be aware that this call is out, and we'll look forward to receiving proposals by November 4th at 4:00. Thank you, Mayor.
David, you wanted to speak on item B H?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just wanted to point out that we're approving, or we're considering for approval, a statue and plaque honoring JW Mashburn, an Olympic gold medalist from South Oklahoma City. And I see Matt Hinkle with Tyler Medias here. And would Matt or Doug be able to share just briefly what this project is about?
Come on up, Matt.
Also believe they're going to maintain the project as well, so.
All right. And Matt, we will need your name and address for the record.
Excuse me. Matt Hinkle, 12408 Stickney Place. Group of well-minded individuals, put some money together, raised the funds to build a statue and a plaque for JW. It's going to go at Early Wine Park. Real nice-looking, lists all his accomplishments, and has a statue of a runner up on the top of it. The Parks Department's been great to work with. Soon as the project is done, we turn it over to them, and they take care of keeping the flowers pretty around it. But should be zero maintenance from here going forward, once the project is complete.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you guys very much.
I would like to mention that I think Early Wine Park is one of the more heavily-used parks. And Eric, just to put you on the spot, we do have plans for some additional improvements out there within the next year. So, we're really looking forward to continued enhancement out there at Early Wine Park. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah, Jim?
Mayor, item B C is a budget amendment that's to be introduced today in a public hearing on October 7th. And Doug, I was here just to highlight the budget amendment.
Well, good morning. We've got changes to several dozen of our funds that total up to about $15.8 million that we proposed in the amendment. The first order there, our first order business is a purchase order rollover, which we do each year. This is for those items that were ordered last year during FY14 but weren't received before we closed the books on FY14. So, the purchase is actually going to be made in FY15, so we need additional budget authority. And that budget authority comes from the money that was reserved for those purchases from the prior year. And so, that totals about $3.6 million. The remaining changes are really related to events that have occurred since we proposed the budget back at the end of April. The first one there is in the Capital Improvement Project Fund. We use that for a number of capital projects and often receive money from other sources or other funds to those projects. And we've had several of those at the Bricktown Ballpark, Chesapeake Arena, several other things. And so, what we're trying to do is restore the budget authority there that's been used on those projects by adding in $2 million in the source of the, to pay for that is basically the money that's come in for these earlier projects. We try to keep a reserve in that fund so that it's available for future projects there. On the Special Purpose Fund, we use that fund to separate out money that's given to us for a very specific purpose, to ensure that those funds are spent only for that designated purpose. And so, we've got several of those in the Special Purpose Fund in this amendment. The Will Rogers Tennis Center, you'll recall, a little over a year ago, approved an amendment with the OKC Public Tennis to provide enhancements at the Will Rogers Tennis Center with the city committing up to $1.4 million to match fundraising. We had not moved that money into the Special Purpose Fund when we had developed the budget, so we didn't put that in there. The money is there. We just need the budget authority to be able to use that to match those donations that come in from OKC Public Tennis. Likewise, at ASA Hall of Fame Stadium, we've got donations as well as money from the Economic Development Trust that's being used to enhance the stadium there. And so, we're asking for $3.5 million in budget authority for that project. Down at Will Rogers World Airport, the Airport Trust has contributed $2.2 million into the Special Purpose Fund for the realignment of Portland Avenue. So, that gets mixed with the bond funds there, available for that project, to run that project. And then we've got some other miscellaneous projects that total up to $780,000. So, a total of just under $8 million in the Special Purpose Fund. Stormwater Drainage Utility Fund has several projects that they want to undertake at the river, Oklahoma River, related to the dams and some other facilities that they have there that total about $1.5 million that's coming from fund balance, in essence, money left over from prior years to cover those costs. And then the last one is related to TIFF number eight. This is the Devon Energy Center TIFF. And we received money from the State Tax Commission related to sales and use tax that went into the construction of that building. And we got the last payment related to that, and it came in higher than we expected when they finally closed all the books on that project. And so, we're asking for $750,000 or so in additional budget authority there. So, as I said, it's about $15.8 million. That'll bring our budget to $1,119.8 million for FY15. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Questions for Doug? All right. Ready to vote the consent docket? Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Thanks, Doug. We're on to item eight. This is the concurrence docket. Okay. Any individual considerations on the concurrence? All right. Cast your votes. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item nine begins a series of items that require a separate vote. First item has been deferred until October 7. So item 9A1 was deferred earlier in the meeting to October 2, 7. Item 9A2 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 600 North High Avenue. It's currently R2 medium-low density, and it would become a new planning development. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anybody signed up?
Yes.
We've had several community meetings in regards to this PUD, and all the issues have been addressed. I move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
We're casting our votes on item 9A2, and it passed unanimously.
Thank you.
9A3 has been deferred until October 7. Again, 9A3 has been deferred to October 7. Item 9A4 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 2200 North Bryant Avenue. It's currently R1, single-family residential, and it would become a new simplified planning development. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to actually do, ask for two motions. The first one would be to approve, then the second one for the emergency. I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion on to approve the motion on item 9A4. Any comments or questions here? Did anyone show up to speak on this item today? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then, John, you'll make a motion on the emergency?
And I move for the emergency.
All right, cast your votes, and it passes 8-0. Item 9B is a name change. Is there a motion here?
Second.
All right, comments or questions on 9B? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9C would clarify some issues for the gaming fish regulations.
And actually, an item was left off regarding striped bass hybrids. And of course, we can't leave off the striped bass hybrids. And so we'd asked that we amended to put that line back in before we adopt the ordinance.
All right. All right, cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Do we need to vote on item 8B1, 8C1 and 2 separately?
Yes.
Okay. So that was on item 8C1. How about a motion then on item 8C2? Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously as well. Item 8D would set some new fee levels for the Parks Department. All right, comments or questions here on item 8D or 9D?
Just a question.
Uh-huh.
I'm sure the public that all we're doing is recovering our cost project, no profit.
That's correct.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9E is the first of two items that deal with the downtown bid, and this would adopt the role. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item today?
A.J. Kirkpatrick is here from downtown Oklahoma City answering any questions that may come forth.
All right, how about a motion then on item 9E?
Second.
Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. And item 9F is a companion item. This would actually set the details of the roles.
Move item second.
All right, does anyone here hoping to speak on item 9F today? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And the emergency is being requested.
Okay.
All right, we're voting on the emergency on 9F, and it passes 8-0. Item 9G is a public hearing regarding an animal welfare issue. This was introduced to council a couple of weeks ago. Is anyone here today to speak on item 9G? All right, how about a motion?
Second.
All right, cast your votes, and that item moves forward. Item 9H is another item that was introduced to council a couple of weeks ago in today, a public hearing. This has to do with our public nuisance ordinances. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item 9H today? All right, how about a motion then to move this one forward?
Move the item?
Cast your votes, and item 9H moves forward. Item 9I was introduced at council two weeks ago. It has to do with Martin Park Nature Center. Is there anyone here that showed up today hoping to speak on item 9I? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, and that item moves forward. Item 9J is an item that'll be introduced today, and this has to do with abandoned buildings. And Bob Teener and Cindy Richard are here to help us understand what this ordinance would do.
Mayor, we adopted an abandoned, vacant abandoned building ordinance last December, and then we tried to do some modifications of state law to be able to enhance that last spring. And actually, a counter movement came, and we were unable to do what was actually put in the original ordinance. So with the new state law, staff got together and sat down and said, what can we do to address this issue under existing state law? And I think we've come up with a pretty good solution for what we can do at this point in time. Bob?
Good morning. I'm going to walk you through the ordinance a little bit. I'm going to also talk to you about our property maintenance program that we're trying to enhance. Really, there's three things that this ordinance will do. It will create escalating fines for the property maintenance violations. It appeals or repeals the vacant and abandoned building ordinance that was adopted earlier this year. And then it creates an ordinance that allows us to try to recover costs for police and fire responses to vacant and abandoned buildings. So I'm going to walk through this process. Our current exterior maintenance process can be done under our current ordinances. We do a first inspection, no violation, the case is closed. We find a violation, we take photos of the property, we complete a form, and then we put the property on notice. Takes us about two days to get that notice. We set up a follow-up inspection that's about 30 days from the original inspection. If there's a violation with progress, meaning that they've worked on the violation, we take pictures to show the progress, and then we give them an additional 30-day extension. If there's a violation with no progress, what we're going to start doing now is we'll take the photos, but we're going to issue a citation. This first citation is really intended to try to get the property owner's attention that they need to work on their property. With the escalating fines, if they're approved, the first would be 100, second would be 250, third would be 500. So we're hoping that, you know, historically, our inspectors have always tried to work through it, give property owners extensions. They probably don't get enough credit for working with property owners and getting things resolved. But we feel to, you know, to actually help the neighborhoods address these vacant properties, we need to do a little bit more. And so that's what we're planning to do here.
Bob, about, excuse me, about how long will this process take?
To implement or?
Well, I mean, once you've implemented, how long from the time the first inspection takes place until the case is closed?
Well, that really depends on how long it takes the citation. If it goes to the citation process, that goes through the municipal courts process. Typically, that first ticket is somewhere between 45 and 60 days. And what we'll do is we'll track it. If somebody comes in and pays that ticket without going to court, then we'll go back out and do another inspection and give them a second citation if they haven't done it. But, you know, it really depends on the progress of the property owner. But through three citations, we do the first citation, it goes 45 days, and we get a conviction in court, then we'll go right back out and write the second and third citations. So 60, 90 days potentially. They're all going to vary, but that's probably the best case.
Thank you.
Okay, the second part is the, this is your current dilapidated, unsecured process. I just want to walk you through how this works. We get a violation, we take photos, and we give notice of the violation, or a violation form is completed. One thing that's different here, we're required by state law to not only notify the owner of the property on the tax rolls, but also any mortgage holders. So 10 days prior to your council hearing, we send notice, we post notice on the property that their property is either being declared unsecured or dilapidated. This next step is where things are going to change a little bit. Currently, on today's docket, there's about 25 structures that would, that could have, this could affect. Basically, we'll ask you to declare the structures dilapidated or unsecured, and then we'll add abandoned list. And we'll ask you at the same meeting to declare those properties abandoned. And the thing that that does for us, that opens up the process for recovering our costs for police and fire services. So like I said, there's about 25 on today's docket that would, you know, if this ordinance is adopted, they would be rolled right into our vacant or abandoned property list. And the last step there is the city clerk files a lien with the county clerk.
Bob, what definition are we using that's different between unsecured, dilapidated, and abandoned?
For the council to declare a property abandoned, it has to be declared unsecured or dilapidated first.
Okay.
So nothing really changes in that process. So the current way that we do those things, we'll bring them to you, and once they're declared, then you can declare them abandoned.
All right.
So that's really, nothing really changes there. Now, if you'll notice on today's agenda, there's some garages and some other things that we wouldn't put them on an abandoned property list. It would have to be the structure that is-
And is there a timeline from the time it's declared, say, unsecured or declared dilapidated, to abandoned? Or will we do that all at the same time?
We'll do that at the same meeting.
Right.
And then we also have some properties, I mean, every week or every two weeks, you've been declaring properties unsecured and/or dilapidated. So we intend to go back and pick up properties that we can bring to you separate of your list and have a hearing, and then you could declare them abandoned as well.
Bob, under the law, at what point can the city condemn those properties to take ownership of them? We file a lien against the property to cover whatever cost. The owner happens to be out of town, he doesn't care about the lien, but he sells the property. Is there a point at which we could go in, we, the city, can go in and condemn that property and take ownership of it because of the lien against it?
I'm not, I'm really not sure if we can actually go that step. We do have the ability to go through a foreclosure and go to district court and try to recoup the cost on police and fire, but I'd have to defer the miss-counselor if we have the ability to take a property or not in that situation. I don't think we'd be able to do that. We'd have to have a public purpose for taking it, and then what will we do with it once we get it? But I'm-
The fact that we have a lien against is not a public purpose?
We could execute against our lien through a foreclosure action. But I'm not sure about taking ownership of it. I have to do some research on that, but I don't know of a process directly to do that.
Okay. It would be very convenient if we could take it, put it back on the market for redevelopment.
It could be possible. So I'll just, the current process, we, after they're declared, we go ahead with the boarding for unsecured and then the demolition for dilapidated properties. This is where the abatement process kicks in, where we'll start tracking those properties for any police and fire response. And we'll work with the police and fire department to try to determine exactly what their costs were, how many employees responded. Once the abatement's done, we'll send a bill to the property owner and any mortgage holders of our costs. The notice of cost for the abandoned properties, we'll do it quarterly. We'll send a notice to the owner and mortgage holders of the abatement costs in that quarter. I mean, we really don't have a good feel for how many police and fire calls we'll get on properties. It's really going to vary widely. We looked at Lantana for the last 12 months, and there were two fire calls. There was another apartment complex that had 17 police calls. So, you know, until we kind of get into this, we don't really know how many calls we're going to have and how many we'll be dealing with. But we anticipate one or two a quarter. Then the next step, if we haven't received a payment in six months for dilapidated or 30 days for unsecured, then we certify to the county treasurer for our current process. It's six months for the abandoned building process, and a lien is filed with the county. Collection, the process is pretty much the same. They either pay it voluntarily, they pay it when the property's sold. If there's a foreclosure action on the property, they would pay it. And then we do have the ability to district court to try to recoup those costs. So naturally, the process, there's one step left. This is the removal from the abandoned list. Once property goes on that list, and we'll track it every time there's a police or fire call, you know, we'll be able to try to assess that cost and recover it. So they have to petition the city clerk to ask to have their property removed. My staff will look at it. Hopefully, this means that they've fixed the problems, they've occupied the property, they've paid their debt, and then we'll make a recommendation to you. There'll be a public hearing within 30 days of the submittal. And it'd be similar to the claims process. We'll either recommend that you accept it and remove it, or we'll outline the reasons we don't think it should be removed. And that's really the two steps that we're talking about. I'm pretty excited about the opportunity to do a little more, I won't say aggressive, but proactive work. We do about 3,000 property maintenance inspections a year. We anticipate that we're going to, we're going to take the 12,000 structure lists that the consultant had on the original vacant abandoned ordinance. We're going to check those properties, and they'll fall into one category. They'll either, you know, they've been repaired, or there'll be a property maintenance issue, or they could be unsecured or dilapidated. So.
I'm trying to answer any questions.
All right, this item is being introduced today, and of course, there'll be a public hearing on October 7. It's currently scheduled for final adoption on October 21. Meg, do you have a question?
I'm just going to say, Bob, this is a lot of the feedback that I had from citizens when we were working on vacant and abandoned, that we had tools, you know, already in our toolbox, and we, you know, perhaps weren't using them as forcefully as we could. So I think this is a great step to try to address proactively, as you said, the issues within our kind of current frameworks.
All right. We're excited about the opportunity.
All right. Why don't we hear from Cindy, and then we'll take questions? I was a little bit premature there in thinking that we had ended the presentation. Cindy?
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, I just wanted to direct your attention to 33-63, which is part of the ordinance amendment before you. It's our schedule of fines. And the only thing that we've done that's relevant to the abandoned building is this, what we call graduated fines for Class A. It's something that you saw last year when we implemented the water rationing ordinance, where we set graduated fines for Class A for first, second, and third offense. We're looking at doing that here also, because these all fall into what we call our environmental docket. And so long as the inspectors can track which violation it is, it'll be per address for these particular citations, then we're able to escalate the fines as we go along. Hopefully, you know, that will bring some serious concern to bear on the part of the property owners. While we were at it, I wanted to do a housekeeping measure that's probably been needed for quite some time. I've had at least one question about whether we're reducing fines here. You can see all my strike-throughs and underlines. We're not actually reducing the fines at all. What we've done is take out a redundancy. $19 has been subtracted from each of those fines, and those are for three state-mandated penalty assessments, CLEET fingerprinting fees, that sort of thing. Those are already set out in Chapter 60, the general schedule of fees. So having them also in our schedule of fines kind of creates a redundancy. We've actually had that litigated recently. We won on appeal, but I would like to go ahead and clear it up so that there's no further confusion. So this sets out the fines, as the fines have been for quite some time, and then we leave the fees and costs elsewhere.
Okay, noted. Larry, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions of either Bob or Cindy. I think Aubrey's back here. The last time we got involved in vacant and abandoned buildings, we kind of started up a hornet's nest, as I recall, and we got the real estate market all energized against the efforts that we were going on our registry. But that is a preamble. My question is, are the real estate people in tune with what we're talking about here in this increased proactive enforcement?
Well, the, this is really what the real estate industry asks us to do, use our- existing code to increase our enforcement, and they basically wrote the recovery cost for the police and fire. One thing that we will do after this, there was discussion about a consortium with them as our partners, to try to help the people that are affected by the additional enforcement, and Aubrey and the planning department are going to work with them to try to partner on how we do that. And so, we did not talk to them about this ordinance. This was, we use, this is an existing ordinance that we can use now, and then the cost recoveries was approved by the state law that went into effect in August of this year, so...
And then, my second question is, I just was briefed this morning, and Jim, I may be totally wrong in this, but there's some, there's been some action out at the State Capitol dealing with vacant and abandoned buildings, and there's some type of a meeting going on this week out there to present their findings. Maybe I'm totally wrong on that, but if I'm not, how might that, how might that impact what we're talking about here?
There is a meeting Wednesday at the State Capitol regarding an interim study. There are actually two interim studies. One was called for by Representative Floyd, and that study involves the vacant and abandoned building question. And then, the other study was by David Dank, who is asking the question about what can be done to enforce occupied buildings that are providing nuisance calls for the police and fire. I do not know what the outcome of that will be. When I spoke with Mrs. Floyd, I told her that as far as staff was concerned, we'd like to try to work with the existing law. You know, every time the law changes, our cheese moves a little bit, and we have to try to recoup and regroup and try to figure out how to address that. So, we'd like to try to work with the existing law for a while and demonstrate some ability to enforce, and then talk about what changes might be needed. But I don't know where that will go with the interim study groups. To my knowledge, this is just the first meeting of that interim study group, so they're, I'm not sure that they're presenting any findings, other than the study that was commissioned by you for our consultant on the vacant and abandoned.
And David Dank's study, staff Laura and Bill City and Jane and a few others met with David and his staff on Friday afternoon regarding his proposal, and we're trying to work through his issues.
It was like a pre-meeting for this meeting on Wednesday.
So, we are monitoring this very closely?
Absolutely, and participating.
Thank you.
All right, James?
I had a question about exterior property maintenance. What are some typical things that fall under that? Because I don't, and does high grass and weeds fall under that, and yard parking? Those are the two.
They're not...
Those don't?
They're not involved in this. I mean, basically, it's paint, broken windows that aren't considered unsecure, roofing material, guttering, loose guttering, those things can all be considered a property maintenance. Fence is, but it's not one that we'll be using to track for the abandoned building, because we're not going to, you know, if you've got a bad fence, we're not going to declare a house, or ask you to declare a house abandoned based on a fence, but...
Well, I'm talking about for the progressive fines, would that fall under that?
The other items are not included in the exterior property maintenance code violation, so the escalating fines don't apply to high weeds and grass and that sort of thing. Certainly not opposed to looking at that at all. We've just kind of been addressing issues that come up in environmental court as they come up before council.
And then, is there a time limit of, with the escalating fines? Say, you have one violation that you get the $100 fine for, and then, three years later, you're still living at the same property? And so, would it be the second one, or would it be the first one? Is there a year limit, or?
There's not that sort of limit. We do clear out our database after five years.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. Any other comments or questions on this item? All right. Again, this item will be back for a public hearing on October 7th, and it is scheduled for final adoption on October 21st. How about a motion to move this forward? Cast your votes, and Item 9J moves on. Item 9K is a public hearing today regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9K? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. And then, Item 8L is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9L? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item 9M is our second public hearing, and this is transferring some money to pay for a fire station. Motion on Item 9M? Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item today? All right, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9N is a salary continuation. Understand, we do not need executive session on this item. So, how about a motion to move it on? All right, is there a second? Cast your votes, that item passes unanimously. And Item 9O, understand, we do not need executive session, so how about a motion to move that forward? Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9P, understand, we do need executive session, so how about a motion to move that to executive session? Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9Q, understand, we do not need executive session today, so we can just, how about a motion to strike? Item 9Q. All right, cast your votes, and that item is struck. Item 9R, understand, we do need executive session, so how about a motion to move 9R into executive session? Cast your votes, and that item moves to executive session. Item 9S is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9S? All right, how about a motion to deny the claims? Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. 9S1D?
Jerry Kavanaugh.
Uh huh.
That is especially, you said that you've already denied it, we need to rescind the denial.
Okay. Okay, so according to legal, if you couldn't hear, counsel, they're requesting that Item 9S1D, we need a motion to rescind the July 15th denial.
How should we do a second?
Okay, is there a second on that? All right, cast your votes, so that item is denied. And are we good on the rest of the claims, or should we vote on those again?
Yes, now we need to vote on the balance.
Okay, so now, we'll vote on the balance of 9S1, and we need a motion then?
Move the item.
Is there a second? All right, cast your votes, and those claims are denied. All right, now, we're on to Item 10, and these are claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 10A? All right, how about a motion here?
Move the item.
Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. We're on to items from counsel. The first is approving travel expenses for the council members to attend the National League of Cities in Austin, Texas, next month. Do we have a motion here?
Move the item.
Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. And continuing items from counsel. James, you have anything for us today? All right, Ed?
I do. I'm growing increasingly concerned and maybe fearful for our Muslim-American population here in Oklahoma City. That as a community has made tremendous contributions to the history of Oklahoma City and Oklahoma. But with foreign events intensifying, we're now in a state where multiple threats have been levied against Muslim leaders, Imam al-Masih, among others. All the, here we are in Oklahoma City, September 2014, all the mosques, the schools, all the mosques, all the children are not allowed to play outside because of concerns about these threats. And I just ask that that be on the council's radar, that as things may intensify in terms of foreign affairs, that we as a city look to protecting that population that's contributed so much. I, as a physician, if I have a patient with cancer, or God forbid, a family, we're going to go to Muslim-American doctors who have contributed so much to the field. That makes some of the comments by elected officials so particularly troubling and hurtful. And I think that's what's leading to a sense of siege for some of our Muslim-American population, is the uncontested public comments from elected officials, which basically sends a message that it's open season politically for that population. When Mr. Bennett from Salasaw says that Muslim-Americans are a cancer that need to be cut out from Oklahoma and America, that would send a chilling message to children of that faith and to all their families. And some media likes to portray it as simply a contest between organizations like CARE and maybe Mr. Bennett. But much more troubling to me is when the head of the Republican Party comes out and goes to the trouble of going on television and saying that Muslims have lived by the sword for 1,400 years, and Mr. Bennett's comments are appropriate. If the head of the Republican Party comes out, the Oklahoma Republican Party comes out and makes these statements publicly, and then no elected official of any branch of government contests it, then basically, the message is it's open season politically, and it's okay. And then, it leads to the kind of threats. The woman that spoke under items from counsel two weeks ago really jolted me, even before these comments. And that's the whole reason that the city manager, I think, has taken the First Amendment position he has on the Civic Center, because you open that door just a little bit, and that woman would be right down here saying, if you're going to rent the Civic Center to the Satanists, then what's next? The KKK or Muslims? Well, she'd be right back down here wanting to block Muslims from renting the Civic Center. So, you don't know who's going to, where that's going to go, and that's why you don't open that door in the First Amendment. But she jolted me, that just, all Muslims are equivalent to the KKK or Satanists. For her to say it is one thing. When elected officials start off with Muslims are, or any group, African-Americans are, Hispanics are, there should be nothing after that that's going to apply to all, so you're stereotyping. And that's to be a basic prerequisite, I would think, for being an elected official, is you don't group all of any faith or ethnicity and try and characterize them with one adjective. So, I'd ask that the council, that this be on our radar. I want to publicly condemn those comments, both by Mr. Weston and by Mr. Bennett. Mr. Bennett sounds consumed by fear, maybe more McCarthyistic kind of simpleton arguments. The one by the head of the Republican Party is much more disturbing to me, because I've seen some polling that shows how damaging the, or how damaging some of the Muslim comments can be. And so, I know he must have seen much more polling. And so, for him to come out and make those comments is particularly troubling. For no elected official to challenge him is even more troubling. And so, I think that we need to publicly condemn those kind of comments. I think it needs to be on the council's radar. I know that it's on our police's radar, and I love our police department chief city, I know it's on his radar. He met with multiple ethnic leaders and religious leaders this Saturday for hours, talking about this. I know that our intel department is taking these threats seriously and is investigating these threats, because it's illegal to make threats against religious leaders or anyone. And so, I commend our police department for keeping a close eye and protecting this population, which has contributed so much to Oklahoma City. Thanks.
Ed, may I ask you a question?
Yep.
Do you think that black public, Muslim public condemnation happening world today are formatted by perversion Islamic faith?
No, I don't think, a child knows nothing about what's going on. I think that...
A child is being threatened because he's Muslim. My question was, black condemnation by the Muslim leadership of some of the acts, perversion of Islam going on in the world today, contributes back to Islam?
No, absolutely not. I think that's classic blaming the victim. I don't know what else they could do. They've had public demonstrations. Not everyone is represented by CARE. I don't know what, you know, a family, a Muslim family, realize, number one, Pat, so many Muslim-Americans in Oklahoma City left countries to escape religious fundamentalism. I mean, their whole reason for upping and leaving their country of origin was to get away from the kind of religious fundamentalism. I mean, their whole life, their whole history, their whole family history is condemning this kind of religious fundamentalism. And so, then they come here, and the idea that they would then want to institute Sharia law is a fairy tale. It's a fantasy. And then, the idea that they need to somehow, that it's their fault, that if they don't get out and publicly condemn, when the head of the Republican Party's on TV saying this and nobody's challenging, I mean, the message politically is, I mean, you'd have to have some fear. The message, I think anyone would be fearful to say anything pro-Muslim at this point. And the polling, just the little I've seen, strongly reflects that. And so, no, I don't think that, I think that the Muslim-American population, especially here in Oklahoma City, condemns that kind of perversion of the Islamic faith. But the fact that they're not doing more in no way justifies the kind of comments and hatred and xenophobia and hate-mongering that we're seeing out of elected officials.
All right. Larry? Pete?
A couple of things. One, I agree wholeheartedly with what Ed said. We, as a country that prides itself in freedom and acceptance, I think it's just incomprehensible to me that we, as a country, permit the kind of abuse that we heap on people. We've done it historically in the past. We've done it based on race. We've done it based on religion. It's a terrible black mark on our history to continue it and not speak out against it. And I appreciate Ed bringing that up today. The other thing is, I'd like to invite all of you to the festival on 25th Street that will happen this weekend. Really a nice event. It goes on from 9:00 in the morning until 9:00 at night, streets, lots of food, lots of activity. They're hoping to have a better weather situation than they've had the last couple of years, where they got rained and winded out a couple of times by cold weather. But it's, if I can get my truck back, I'm going to drive it in the parade, but I'm not sure I can get it back today. I talked to my truck guy, who was here for a few minutes, and he promised me he'd get it back for me, so... Anyway, I'd like to invite all, it's a great event. It's a great event. Very, very, very good, very good thing for 25th Street, and it's, you're all welcome to come. Since its election year, probably be a lot of politicians there too, so...
David?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the city received some good news last week with the announcement that the Los Angeles Dodgers had selected Oklahoma City to be the location of its AAA ball team. I think that's significant for them to change their longstanding location, being in Albuquerque. I know part of the reason, at least what I've heard, is due to a change in altitude, but still, they spoke very favorably about the city and the opportunities for this city to continue to grow and support their team. And fortunately, the Dodgers have a history of having a well-managed team throughout the various levels of professional baseball. And so, even though we may have a few non-Dodger fans, I hope that, and I anticipate that the attendance will be improved going forward, and it'll just be a very fun time. The Red Hawks are a fun game, team to watch, and it's a very enjoyable time already. I think it's just going to be that much better going forward. Thank you.
Meg?
Yeah, just following on with Pete's invitation to Fiesta de Las Americas, I wanted to remind everybody that the Plaza Festival's going on as well, on 16th Street, so I'm sure... So I'm sure that these aren't the only two festivals happening this weekend. I think there's a lot of activity happening down on the river as well. But both the Fiesta de Las Americas and Plaza Festival are really fun Saturday afternoons to get out and enjoy our city.
All right, Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am a little bit concerned in reference to people parking on grass. I'm very concerned about people, the issue of people parking on grass. Of course, this past week, for a week and a half, people went to the state fair. And majority of the parking that's available at the state fair is grass parking. But you didn't see cold enforcement out there giving people tickets. The overflow parking for the Boathouse District, which is in my ward, is grass parking. When there's an event at the Zoo Omniplex, at the amphitheater, majority of the people park across the street on grass. But we don't see cold enforcement enforcing the issue of parking on grass. A couple of weeks ago, I had a church in northeast Oklahoma City where their membership were ticketed for parking on the grass. I have an issue with the simple fact, it seems that we are selective, doing selective enforcement. If we're going to sit there and give somebody a parking ticket for parking on the grass while they are inside a church as overflow parking, but we're not going to ticket people who park on the grass at the state fair, the Boathouse District or Zoo Amphitheater area, I'm sorry, that's a selective enforcement. So I want to see us to do something that allows for parking on the grass for city events and for nonprofits who may have a special event. Because, because right now, it is selective enforcement. It's not for somebody to go to church to praise their God that they serve and people who go to the state fair, it's the same thing. So I think we need to really look at that. We need to look at the whole issue on people parking on grass because it's not, it's not even playing the field. Thank you.
Mayor, David's comment about the Dodgers, I wonder if he's talking about me or you?
Doesn't really matter, does it?
Actually, if I could, if I was a fan of being about the Cardinals, I'd be a Dodger fan though. My friend, Don Demeter, who played for other major league teams, never claims to be anything but a Dodger, so. And as a Capit Hill graduate, as I remember, something like 18 guys that played for Capit, played baseball at Capit Hill between about 1951 and 1956 signed contract, minor league contracts with the Dodgers. An unbelievable number.
Eleven of the 1953 team that won state signed professional contracts. And Don was the least of them as far as, you know, as far as his contract and everything, but yet had the longest career. And now he's a very successful pastor here in Oklahoma City and we're just very fortunate to have him around.
Was it the Brooklyn Dodgers or Los Angeles?
He was out by the time the team had moved to Los Angeles and moved in 58.
Do you want to, our AAA reputation city watching carefully?
It'll be fun, but at least both St. Louis and San Francisco are still in the National League, so at least we're keeping it within the same league.
Actually, I think Giants fans probably don't like the Dodgers more than Cardinal fans.
Oh, I would not say too.
Because we've got the Cubs to dislike.
Yes, right.
It's always good to have someone to not like and beat you.
Absolutely. It's what baseball's all about, huh? Everybody loves the Cubs because they never do anything.
That's right. Doesn't do any good to dislike them. All right, city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Doug Dollars here is to present our FY14 performance report. We've been doing this now for several years and, you know, we're measuring a lot of things and giving you information thereof. I've been to a couple of conferences in the last several months and everybody doesn't do this. I think it's very clear that we probably do more, more measurement and reporting on those measurements than probably almost any other city.
Thank you very much. I'm pleased to be here to present our FY14 performance report. I've got two of my staff here that helped me out. Joanna McSpadden is our specialist that's over our leading for results process. She just returned from having a baby from maternity leave. And while she was out, Derek Feig, one of our budget analysts, handled all of the reporting and duties relating, leading for results in addition to his regular job. And so I certainly want to recognize Derek and appreciate him for all his work on that there. So we've handed out two documents to you. The first one is kind of the smaller one is what we've designed for citizens to kind of go over the basics of our performance information. The second is a more detailed, little thicker document that goes over every result and output measure for all of the departments for the city. These measures were in the budget book that you received when we adopted the FY15 budget, but those were estimated values for FY14. What we have here is the actual results that were achieved for FY14. These reports are also available on OKC.gov as well as we've got a web-based application out there that will allow you to look at each measure in depth if you'd like. So our first, well, let's see, I guess my clicker's not working. If you can go ahead and hit the, the first priority we'll look at is providing a safe and secure community. In the citizen report, we've highlighted response times at fire, police and IMSA. As you can see on the slide, both fire and police fell short of their respective targets for meeting their response time standards. IMSA managed to exceed its target. And as you'll recall from the presentations made to council earlier this year on this priority, two of the other measures, cardiac arrest, survival rate and crime rate showed improvement from the prior year. The final measure under this priority was feeling of safety from the citizen survey. Unfortunately, in the last citizen survey, the feeling of safety declined to 51% of the population is either satisfied or very satisfied with the feeling of safety in the city, and that's below our target of 55%. As we look at promote, the priority of promoting thriving neighborhoods, we're not able to show a change in this first indicator, which is the percentage of vacant buildings. This comes from that study that was completed in 2013. And it was assumed that this indicator would get updated as the vacant and abandoned buildings program got off the ground, but with some of the delays, we've had, we haven't seen that. And as we, as the new program that was laid out here by Bob Tina earlier this morning begins to take hold, we may be able to see some adjustment to this. But this information is from 2013 on the 4% vacant, percent of buildings that are vacant and abandoned. Citizen satisfaction with the quality of their neighborhood is at 66%, and that's just above our target of 65%. And the final indicator under this priority is the percentage of the population living within the inner loop, and that increased by 0.3% this past year. As we look at maintaining strong financial management, one of our key measures there is the percentage of the general fund maintained in unbudgeted reserves. The city's financial policies call for maintaining a level of 8 to 15% with a target to maintain the reserve at the higher end of the range during good times to ensure that the reserve is available during difficult times. And as noted in the interim financial report that was presented a couple of weeks ago, we'll begin FY15 with unbudgeted reserve of about 16.5% in the general fund. We did not make a slide for bond rating, but as you know, the city maintains its AAA bond rating this year, a direct reflection of strong financial management. One of the factors that rating agencies recognize is our strong unbudgeted reserve levels. Another measure tracked under strong financial management is the overall satisfaction.
Fund levels and fund policies and our unwillingness to use fund balances for continuing operations and using only for capital expenditures is really a big deal with rating agencies.
It may not make sense that we put quality of customer service under strong financial management, but we include that to make sure that we're really handling our resources well, that we are making the most of what we receive from our citizens by maintaining that citizen satisfaction. And as you can see, that level has remained very consistent since '08, ranging from 63 to 70%, with the last survey showing 66% satisfaction. And that 66% rating is 18% above the national average, as we heard from our consultant at ETC this last year. As we turn to developing a transportation system that works for all citizens, we'll look at public transit riders per hour first. You recall from Jason Fairbrush's presentation earlier this year that the number of riders overall has increased the last several years. However, the riders per hour has decreased the last two years as the number of service hours has increased faster than the number of riders. With the additional service enhancements that you all approved in the FY15 budget, it'll be a challenge to boost that number in FY15, although we do expect the number of overall riders to continue to increase. As we look at citizen satisfaction with city streets, it remains steady in 2014 with the average at 36% satisfaction with major city streets and neighborhood streets. We're kind of showing both there, what we receive, what the survey results that we get from major streets as well as neighborhood streets. We take an average of those as our overall indicator there. As we look at supporting high-quality public education, public schools and community health and wellness, our two health-related measures are the percentage of citizens reporting regular leisure time physical activity and the percentage of citizens living within a half mile of a recreational opportunity. Leisure time physical activity remains steady this last year in our survey at 66%. The calculation methodology for determining the percentage of citizens living within a half mile of a recreation opportunity is down a little bit, but a lot of that is because of the methodology we used. The, in prior years, what we did is had our GIS system just simply draw a big circle around each park or trail or that sort of thing and count the number of people that live within that circle. This year, our folks in the IT got a little more sophisticated and really tracked what would it take to walk or drive to a park? So just because you can, you're within that half mile, it may not be a half mile to get there because of a creek or there's not an easy path to get there. You may have to walk or go quite a further distance. So they've taken it, what, how long does it take you to get there or what's the distance to get there? And when we use that new methodology, our percentage stands at 45% of our citizens are within a half mile of a recreation opportunity. On the education side, graduation rate in Oklahoma City public schools increased to 82%, while third grade reading proficiency dropped a bit to 50%. The preamble to our priorities that's on the cover of the report here is one of the, one of the values that we've carried on for many years the council has, has been delivering on what we promise. And that, so continuing to be responsive to our citizens' needs as we address these priorities is just a key factor here. And so one of the ways we measure that is the question in our citizen survey of is the city heading in the right direction? And as you can see on the graph, this figure is held remarkably steady since '08 and came in at 78% in FY14. So in addition to the annual performance report, we've handed out here again that we have that supplemental report that goes into detail on every department. We have these available again out on the web. Or if you think this might be something you'd want to hand out to citizens at a meeting or something like that, we'd be happy to present or provide extra copies for you to have that available. And I'd be happy to take any questions you have on our performance report and how we manage our leading for results process.
All right, questions for Doug? All right, Doug, thank you.
The workshop next week is on council priorities?
Yes, sir. We have a strategic planning workshop we do every two years. We're going to sit down and review our priorities and make sure that we're, they're on target and it's the way council wants us to go. It'll be next Tuesday.
All right, citizens to be heard. We have one person that's signed up, Joe Sarge Nelson.
Well, I'm Joe Sarge Nelson. And I guess, kind of like Robin Williams, the late Robin Williams that is, on Good Morning, America, he got kicked off that program for talking like it is. And I'll probably get the same thing here. I have a lot to say here, but I kind of think I'm just going to cut it short. I have for five minutes and I'm not likely to get it. But I think the best thing for me to do, if you have no objections, how do I get these up to you three?
Yeah, just walk up and hand them out. We can pass them out and just.
For some while, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Couch, I have done the investigation, come here many a times and fell flat on my face. Everybody has always taken, you leave that sealed till I leave if you don't mind because it's going to raise a ruckus anyway. But I'll tell you what's in the envelope before I even leave the microphone. You brought up the idea of, I saw you on Meet the Press. I was impressed with the pictures you showed. I just wish you'd showed the truth, which would have been the rest of the district and showed the deep deuce that is in Bricktown. We are in a very dangerous zone, don't kid yourself. One big city official lost his mother. I almost lost mine. And in Bricktown, we've had stabbings, we've had shootings, recently in fact. And one remark in here said that you weren't sure about certain things. I went through all my records in the last three years, three and a half years, and even do you riding down the street in your car when you first got elected with your driver. And a lot of people, to set the record straight, has always been under the impression, and I don't mean what I'm going to say derogatory, or that Mr. Shadiv and I, during the mayor's election, was in cahoots. And he's my doctor, but we are not in cahoots. Some of his goals I believe in, some of them I do not, just like the rest of you. But I do know that Oklahoma City's in a lot of trouble. My biggest gripe is y'all gave the police department and the fire department a token, a few police officers of what we really need. They need a lot more. We've got a good man running the show. In fact, I believe the gentleman is sitting right back there. He doesn't even know I'm bringing it up. We need police officers badly. We need fire department badly. Right now, I told you all, like the pictures I presented, about the buildings, I mean the pillars, they are illegal. Now the structure, brand-new structure of Scissor Tail is being shut down. The cement and everything is cracked, steel, lack of support. Somebody didn't know how to do their job. Now I'm a construction engineer by trade. I've been retired 20 years. I'm going to stay retired, but I do have a resume if it's ever called for. The documents you have in front of you is a three and a half year investigation calling for resignations, not the recall. And Mr. Mayor, Mr. Couch, and they are legitimate. There's not one file downstairs because this is not a recall. The courthouse is right across the street. If you wish to respond, I think I've used all the proper words, everything from graft to corruption to racketeering. And I can back, and I've said this before, I never make a statement. I cannot back up, prove or document. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe. We have executive session. We'll be back and then we will convene as the finance committee after executive session. after executive session. We have returned from executive session, we are adjourning the council meeting and convening as the finance committee.
And up is Doug Dollar again to talk to us a little bit about our CIP.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, we distributed to you the five-year CIP plan. We were going to do some presentations on it then, but because of the late hour, we deferred those till this week. But I'll just give you a brief overview of the plan, and then Fire, Police, and Public Works will present information on their parts of it. We update the plan every two years. The last time we updated it was adopted in October of 2012, and the plan is officially reviewed and approved by both the Planning Commission and the City Council. There's a number of sources that identify the capital projects in the plan, from the authorized geo-bond program, department business plans, special studies such as the Parks Master Plan, and those are all informed by citizen survey and the council priorities. I'm not going to go through the full schedule that you see here that got us to where we are, but I do want to highlight that this process began about 10 months ago and note that all the, it remains, all that remains is for the Planning Commission and City Council to review and approve the plan. We'll take a look now at the plan by funding source, and the first thing to note is the size of the plan. The total for all projects in the plan is $2.8 billion. The second thing I want to note is that the chart on this slide shows the broad funding categories. If you want more detailed information, that can be found in the book near the back in page 335. So, as we look at this chart of where our funding comes from, you'll see that the largest portion is from trust funds at 47.3, and Water Utilities Trust is the largest in that source at just over $1 billion. Special tax funds are at 25.1 percent, are the second-largest contributor, with MAPS-3 being the single-largest piece of that slice of the pie. Geo-bonds account for 12.3 percent, or $348.5 million, and the unfunded portion makes up 9.3 percent and includes projects such as the public safety radio system upgrade, several parks and riverfront projects, as well as the police and fire fleet replacement beginning in FY18. As we look at the five-year plan by function, the chart and the numbers behind it are on page 334 of the cap five-year plan. Public services is the largest function at 62 percent. That's $1.7 billion, and that's projects in public works, airports, water and wastewater utilities. Culture and recreation at $802 million, or 28.3 percent, includes parks and recreation, fairgrounds, zoo, riverfront, MAPS-3 projects, civic center, and golf courses. Public safety is just 4.3 percent at $122 million. That's things like the police and fire fleet replacement, new police headquarters, and courts complex as well. And then general government, our smallest, our second-smallest piece at 4.9 percent is comprised of our general fleet replacement, technology and capital maintenance on city facilities. The last breakdown that I want to give you here is by project... here is by project type. Again, this is over the next five years. Utilities projects make up the biggest piece at 37%, $1.1 billion. Facilities projects are the second-largest at 33.7%, and of that MAPS III projects are $350.4 million, and airports projects are $312 million. Those are the two largest categories within our facilities category. When you put together those non-utility infrastructure categories, that's bridges, traffic, streets, drainage improvements, they total to 10.1%, or $283 million. Streets, again, being our number-one priority, is the largest piece of that at 8.6%. And then community enhancement represents 11.8%, or $331 million of the total, includes several MAPS III projects, parks and recreation, and riverfront redevelopment projects. The schedule for the coming next several weeks includes consideration by the Planning Commission, with a target for adoption by the Planning Commission on September 25. Departments will be making presentations today, and in two weeks, departments will be presenting today and in two weeks, and then council adoption is targeted for October 24. So that's kind of a quick overview of the plan, and then we've got Fire, Police and Public Works to present as well. I'd be happy to answer any general questions you have about the plan, and if not, we'll bring up Fire.
Okay. Good morning, Council. Greetings on behalf of Chief Bryant. He was called away to California to take a look at the wildfire situation out there. He's gone for a couple of days. So I'd like to introduce Clint Rigier. He's our Department Business Manager, and he schooled me on this yesterday, so hopefully I can do it as well as Chief Bryant does. Our five-year CIP presentation, move into our funding sources. As you can tell, in three categories, we have the fire sales tax fund, our 2007 geo-bond funds, and the MAPS III use tax, which is used for fleet and vehicle replacement. Those figures fall into that right there, and we have a schedule of replacement in place, or an anticipated schedule. The equipment dollars are going to be used primarily for our LifePAC systems, the 1000s and the 15s. The 15s are used for our advanced life support engines. They have more capabilities, and of course they're much more expensive, about $40,000 apiece, including the maintenance and service contracts. And then the 1000s are used on our basic life support response units, and they run about $4,000 a year, including those contracts as well. You can see the proposed schedule for replacement in this slide, and the primary issue here is that the replacement is based on when those units are recommended to be replaced. So you'll see that there's no replacement of the 1000s in the first four years, and it skips a year in 2017 for the LifePAC 15s. So again, that's all based on the recommended service life of the unit. And we move into our vehicle replacement program. There is a total of $30 million in our response vehicles, about $2.9 million in our passenger, for a total of almost $33 million. The current funding for this program does come from the MAPS III use tax, which will expire about mid-FY18. So obviously, another funding source has to be identified, and our chief and the budget officer are all working on those things there. We do have a replacement schedule that includes a total of about 26 engine companies over this five-year plan, eight rescue ladders, three heavy tankers, a couple of hazmat units, five brush pumpers, and a heavy rescue, and two light rescue units. Of course, I have the projected price codes, cost for those, if you're interested. Then our other project is our fire stations. It's interesting to note, at this point, you approved an amendment this morning to add $300,000 to complete Fire Station 26, and that was as a result of some change orders after the station was completed, and we anticipate those being done rather quickly. But the problem, it's not a problem, but you build a fire station, you've got the construction costs, but there's so many other costs involved. To open that fire station, you have to have the alerting system, and you have to have furnitures and fixtures and appliances, and sleeping quarter, and what have you, extractors to take care of the bunker gear as required by NCPA standards, air cascade systems to keep their air bottles full, and backup generators. I mean, those people tend to go there when the power is out. Those costs run about $700,000 over the construction cost of a fire station. So you can see where the costs are, sometimes we can't budget all the way and know exactly what those are going to be. We have three or four stations in progress for the next five years. Station 21 and Station 29 have already been, the architects have been selected, and we're working with Public Works and the architect to gain the best cost possible for those projects. Station 21 is a rebuild, and it's located on Southwest 29th now at Independence, and will be moved slightly to the east on the east side of I-44 and west of May Avenue. It'd be right next to that Parks Department facility, and that would be coming up very soon as well. Station 29 is to be a brand-new station. It's going to be in the southeast part of the city, located on 164th between Midwest Boulevard and Air Depot. Again, those architects have been selected, and we're working with them in Public Works. Station 23 will be the next one. That's the rebuild as well. Station 23 is currently located just north of Southwest, Southeast 29th and Eastern. That station will be rebuilt adjacent to the lot just south. It's going to be right there on the same corner. There's a bit of a change to this station in that we're going to be adding an extra bay, because I'll be moving that district chief for that area out to that station. Again, that's a rebuild, and it'll house an engine company, a brush pumper, and the district chief. And then finally, Station 38 is proposed in FY15, '16. The land has already been purchased for this project. It's at the corner of Southwest 59th and Richland Road. The current response data in Oklahoma City indicates that we should do the southeast station first, so that's the reason this one is scheduled for later. Again, other projects within the facilities category is the minor changes and change orders to Station 26, which will be done very soon. The facilities assessment project has been bid, and a cost proposal has been accepted with the vendor, so that'll be upcoming. And we've completed the HVA system overhaul at Fire Station 1, and the remaining funds would be for paving, roofing, and remodels as the needs arise. Questions?
All right. Questions for Fire? All right, nothing today.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'll be presenting the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2015 through 2019. Lieutenant Dan Stewart is here to, works out our planning research, is here to support me. Okay. Our capital plan by fiscal year, you can see where in '14 and '15, you see the largest amount of $54 million. That dollar amount primarily includes helicopters, vehicles, headquarters, Southwest Station, some building improvements. So it's the largest year there where it shows funding. Summary of projects, you can see that Police Headquarters, Courts Complex, and Equipment are the largest amount in that summary of projects. Equipment there includes cars, trucks, vans, motorcycles, helicopter, special projects, vehicles, and others. So that's why it's so large, and obviously Police Headquarters and Courts. Like only about $3 million out of the Police Headquarters and Courts Complex, so that number is for the construction plans for the Courts that's taken out of that. Projects by funding, you can see where the use tax makes up 45% of that, and again, it's primarily in that dollar amount, it's primarily going to be funding for the headquarters and for vehicles. Vehicles, you can see our, for our current 2015, the price of our vehicle is about $32,000, almost $33,000, and then by 2019, with about a 5% escalator built-in per year, it's almost $40,000 over that five-year period. Police Department has a total of about 865 total units, and out of that, 584 are actually marked vehicles. Now, that number does not include equipment, you know, computers and additional equipment amounts to about $8,000 or over that dollar amount. This shows our five-year fleet replacement plan. You can see in '14, '15, and '18, '19 are our largest abouts. We have 217 planning to be replaced in '14 and '15, and then in '18, '19, 248 vehicles. It should be noted that fiscal year '18, '19, that dollar amount is currently unfunded. Again, we replace our vehicles, our black-and-white vehicles, at about 100,000 miles. Usually, it's a little over that. Some vehicles, we keep over that mileage if they're unmarked and they haven't been driven very hard, and it just varies depending on the years after that that we've had the vehicle, and the maintenance costs on that.
How long does it typically take, Chief, to put 100,000 miles on a car?
About five years. A black-and-white car in the field, usually, is about 20,000 to 22,000 miles a year. Now, obviously investigative cars, unmarked cars, are a lot less. So in most cases, those vehicles, we keep more than five years. Our police helicopter five-year plan, you know, we have the two new helicopters. We don't have them yet. We have one that's ready. We should be picking up here in September. You can see for '14 and '15, there's no cost either for maintenance or replacement, because we've already met those costs. In '15 and '16, you're going to have some minor maintenance. I mean, all the costs here that you see each year are going to be primarily for maintenance, and you can see in '16 and '17, when anticipated first overhaul of our new helicopter will have to be made. If you put, it's usually 4,000 miles right now on a helicopter before you have to do a major overhaul that's required. With the new helicopters, those miles may go up. They may rate it a little bit higher where we can fly it a lot longer before that maintenance. That's pretty expensive to have it done, so you can see what the costs amount to in that case. Our Hefner and Spring Lake Briefing Stations, we've got $375,000 set aside for each of those stations. These are our older stations. We've expanded. We've changed some functions in both of those divisions. Impact is one of them. We've had Impact for a long time, but we really don't have sufficient office space, so we're going to do some renovations to both of those divisions to be able to accommodate additional offices. Our new Police Headquarters, it's looking more and more like that all the time. They're putting brick up right now. Do they have a picture of the next slide? Is that a little bit, there you go. And it's actually a little bit further along than that. You can see brick on the lower half. There's brick on the, actually the west side, and actually on the south side, and they're starting to brick the front of that. You know, I think they've already ordered the glass, so they're trying to get it sealed off, so if the bad weather comes, they can do most of their work inside at that point. So it's exciting. It's gone up, it's on schedule. It's gone up on time, and the space inside looks really, really, looks nice. So a lot of officers are looking forward to it. New Southwest Briefing Station, it will, it should be complete here in September. I mean, it's almost completed now, but if you've driven out there, there's, obviously there's some landscaping. There's a few other things out front they're going to have to do, but everybody's pretty pleased with the facility, and like I say, it should be done in September. And that's the presentation. If you have any questions.
All right. Questions for the Police, Chief?
Thank you.
Bill, thank you. And Public Works?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Presentation that we have today is the Public Works Department CIP for 2015 through 2019, I think just is an introduction to Public Works, and really a part of our budget presentation. We're a department of about 400. We've got six divisions, predominantly Streets is our largest division, and so a lot of the presentation that you're going to see is going to revolve around Streets, and of course, that also follows with one of our council priorities, improving public streets and the quality of our city streets. Thanks goes to J.C. Reese and also Paul Bronson for helping us get our presentation together today. So thank you to both of them. If you look at our fiscal year plan, you'll see the next five years, you'll see the total is $365 million. There's going to be several slides that I'll show you that kind of break that down, both by project and by fund. Next slide. This is going to be the work by project type, and I don't think it's probably any surprise, and just as I mentioned, our largest amount of work occurs in Streets. You'll see $237 million of the CIP is geared towards that total. The next would be, you know, our facilities. You'll see that in the upper-left-hand corner at $79.5 million, but we also do drainage, bridges, traffic, and then some other projects as well. If you look at the funding source, predominant funding source for the majority of our work is the bond issue. In this case, the 2007 geo-bond, which accounts for $271 million of the work, but on the right-hand side of this chart, you'll see the other funds, which include capital improvement funds, the next largest at $30 million. You'll see PPA unspecified, which are just some miscellaneous, could be donations and other funds, stormwater, utility fees, street and alley, and the rest of the breakdown. So as we look at the number of projects, again, street widening and resurfacing are the top two, but we also have intersection traffic control, streetscapes, drainage, bridges, and also facilities. So on these next series of slides, as we look at that $365 million CIP, I'm going to give you a few examples, and also show some location maps. They're going to show you a lot of those projects, you know, in the various wards. So looking at this first map, these are the 2000 geo-bond issue projects in that next five-year CIP, and you're going to see those noted throughout the city. So when we look at that geo-bond, there's a lot of work, north, south, east, and west, but there's usually several projects in each of the individual wards. This is an example of one of those. This is Eastern Avenue. It was a two-to-four-lane widening, federally-funded project. This was about a $5.7 million project that is now complete. This is Portland Avenue near the Will Rogers World Airport, Southwest 74th to Southwest 104th. This work is still underway. It is being constructed in two phases, but obviously, it's repairing and replacing a lot of existing infrastructure that's on the east side of the airport. Looking at our resurfacing locations, you're going to see there's several that are here. This is predominantly the general fund resurfacing. Should recall that prior three years, there was $8 million allocated by the City Council, a million per ward, and this is what accounts for each of those projects. So this is $24 million total. The different colors, the green is 2011, the blue is the 2012 projects, and the red is the 2013. And looking at some of those, you'll see a lot of these different residential and other resurfacing projects. This is Northwest 13th. This is Neighborhoods on 16th, and then there were other projects like on Hudson. But again, there was similar work just throughout the city in various locations of a lot of resurfacing that was not a part of the bond issue. We look at intersection and traffic control. There's a number of projects predominantly the ITS program. So this is the intelligent traffic control. This is the upgrade of more than 750 signalized intersections in Oklahoma City, all wards on all areas. What you see in the lines are the 18 corridors, and again, these are those commuter corridors where we've been able to synchronize those lighting systems to shorten the time that it would take to commute to Oklahoma City. This is what that work looks like in the field. Obviously, the cabinets, which are apparent on each of the intersections that have a lot of the hardware, we didn't actually replace the cabinets or the lighting, but we replaced a lot of the systems inside those cabinets. So they're modernized. They're wireless communication, so we do have the ability to communicate with them here downtown. We have the ability to actually program them as well, but it's allowed us to do a lot of new things with the software and the hardware that's been added. This is a project that will actually finish with all intersections in 2015. This is an example of one of those intersections at Northwest 164th and Penn. Complete improvements, this also included some sidewalks, ADA access, and other things, but it did have the ITS components included, and the total cost of this intersection was about $3 million. Moving on to our streetscapes projects, this is predominantly Project 180. I know we've made presentations on this in the past, but looking at this, we've got our map on the right that again shows the various locations, the blue The blue designates the completed projects. The ones in yellow, brown, and red are those future works. We still have two small packages to bid. The work is significantly underway in downtown. Progress is being made, but we will be finishing the bidding of these projects in early '15 with completion in 2016. These are just some examples of some of the before and afters, and obviously, when we look at the right-hand photo, enhanced streets with crossings, amenity zones, benches, new signal lights, new street lighting, pedestrian lighting, and other items. This is what it looks like during construction, and I know that we're being, you know, this is something that we're more familiar with, but you see that we have converted to being able to separate the pedestrian zones from the work zones with the barrier walls. Those have been well-received in downtown. It's allowed us to maintain active pedestrian access to all those businesses. But again, we're working through those segment by segment and opening those up as quickly as possible. Moving on to our drainage projects, we look at this next map, you'll notice that there's an emphasis on, of course, the Oklahoma River, but there are some various projects throughout Oklahoma City. They're in various locations. Next slide is one of our bigger projects that was completed at Northwest 51st and Hemingway. This is near the Penn Square Mall. A lot of these existing concrete line channels require significant maintenance, obviously large cost to the city, but those panels are replaced to make sure that we've got active and good drainage throughout the areas of the city. There are additional projects like this that we're starting to complete, but again, you'll see that the limitations of the 2007 were that there's additional needs, and so we're continuing to track those, and those are the things that will be included in future proposals. Moving on to the bridge projects, and there's a number, you'll see that these are throughout Oklahoma City, and a couple of examples. This is the Douglas Boulevard Bridge. What you see on the left-hand photo is an erosion of the abutment that's holding up the right end of that bridge, and you can see the completed work in that right-hand photo. So we're constantly providing bridge maintenance like this. This is about a $55,000 project. Another example is the Quell Creek Bridge, which is actually a pedestrian bridge, and again, another location where on the left-hand photo, you'll see that the abutment and the supporting structures were eroded. You can see the repair work that was done here on that right-hand photo. That work is also complete. So the last category of work in Public Works CIP is the building projects, and there's a number of these that Public Works acts as project manager on each. These are the locations. Now, we do work on Fire, we do work on Police, Parks, and also City Libraries. And these are some similar photos to what Chief City just showed you at the Police Headquarters. These were some of the renderings of that work of the new Police Headquarters that's well underway to be completed in 2015. These are some of those earlier construction photos showing a lot of that structural steel going up, but obviously, today, a lot of progress has been done. The skin is going on to that building, with a lot of the brick veneers and some of the finishes. Fire Station 26, which is in southwest Oklahoma City, Southwest 119th and Rockwell recently opened. This is another project that was just completed. Some of the interiors, I'm showing the equipment room there and some of the workout facilities for the firefighters. Lincoln Park Clubhouse, which had an agenda item on council today, 4001 Northeast Grand Boulevard, this work is also proceeding very quickly. Again, as mentioned, it's expected to be open in December of this year. And then we can also do other renovation-type work on the Cox Convention Center, so a facility that's obviously been originally constructed in the '70s, part of the original MAPS program, but we're at the point where now, like carpet replacements are underway, and so this is a significant project that was recently completed at the Cox. And with that, that wraps up my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Questions for Eric? All right, Eric, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the Finance Committee? Comments from you?
Mr.?
All right. Words adjourned.